I'd like to call the General Committee into order by a piece rise for the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather together this evening to plan in the best interest of the children we serve, guide our decision-making, and help us to be worthy of the public's trust. We are grateful for the support in this community, and we are especially grateful for parents who partner with us in their child's education. We recognize the importance of a strong system of public education to a community's economic growth, and we ask that you guide us as we continue our efforts to provide excellence in education to our students. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Lamoyne, lead us in the pledge, please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every single justice.
Ms. Fauchez, roll call, please.
Mrs. Assavager?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lamoyne?
Here.
Ms. Dyssard?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mr. Long is not with us, Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Spott?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fauchez. Ms. Dyssard, do you want to address the board?
Thank you, Mr. England. At this time, I'd like to add an agenda item, a resolution, and I'd like to make that in a form of a motion.
Right. They have a motion by Ms. Dyssard, second by Ms. Lamoyne, they have a motion to do a resolution. Okay, we need a board majority, so please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Still need Ms. Dyssard.
Thank you, Mr. England. Yes, we understood that Governor Edwards was going to be in St. Bernard Parish tonight. However, he has a very, very busy calendar and schedule, but we, due to the support and the wonderful things that he has done for public education, we wanted to present him with a proclamation, and we'll send this to Baton Rouge for him, and it reads as such, "Presented to Governor John Bell Edwards, an honored and tireless supporter of public education, for his dedication and commitment to increasing teacher and support employee salaries for the first time in ten years, and for his leadership in securing additional funding for students throughout the state of Louisiana by increasing the minimum foundation program." So I'd like to place this as a resolution.
A joint acclamation.
A joint acclamation, if everyone would be in favor.
Joint acclamation, I will approve. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we will send this to him in Baton Rouge. And again, thanks to Governor Bell, John Bell Edwards, and to our legislative delegation for supporting the teacher pay raise in the MFP addition.
He's been a true fighter for public education, and I don't know too many governors that in the near future, I mean in the near past, that has been as active as he is. So we really appreciate everything that he has done for public education, and I know the teachers already at the fashion time for the pay raises and that, but as far as, but I remember with the LSBA years ago, he got the award from the LSBA for being the most active senator in the legislature, you know, for public education. So again, we thank Mr. Governor Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. England.
You know, and I'd like to add to that, as Mr. England said that when the governor was in-house on House Education, he was probably the leading proponent, and over the course of many years has been directly responsible for increases in funding for public education and for programs that benefit our students, right? He got a piece of legislation helped to introduce and get it passed to form, this last session, to form the Dual Enrollment Task Force Commission that I sit on for the state, which is intended to come up with the funding and the resources and the cooperation with higher education for every junior and senior in the state of Louisiana to be able to take at least two dual enrollment courses, college courses, per year, free of charge to their, you know, parents, their families. And then we, of course, supplement that. So the, I guess his commitment to education is, has been shown over the course of really his lifetime in the legislature and now as governor of the state. So we owe a great deal of gratitude, not only the employees for the pay raises, which are always welcome, but as importantly for our students, that we can continue to offer the programs and staff at the levels we staff, as he has helped to increase the funding formula. And in this last legislative session, there's a lot of controversy swirling around about how that was going to happen. But he had come up with that proposal last fall and held steadfastly throughout the session and was able, with the help of really a very bipartisan group in both the House and the Senate, to get tremendous support for our teachers in public education, that, to be perfectly honest, crossed party lines and everything in making it a coalition that benefited our students and our teachers and all employees. So we owe him a great debt of gratitude for that.
Thank you, Mr. England. And he may get here before the end of the meeting, but, you know, if not, we will again send this to Baton Rouge.
Thank you, Ms. Dyssard.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other board members? Okay, if not, we move on to item number four, Super News. Ms. Snyder, glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. England. Good evening, everyone. You have, the communications report is marked in your folders as number four. On the front page, you just have a few of the press releases that made it to the paper. One of the things I would like to just give a thank you to Barry Lamoyne, we had a beautiful release in The Advocate regarding Coach Plesha on her 700th win. That was a huge testament to her legacy, as well as the reach she's had both on teachers and coaches throughout the state. It was a really lovely article. You flip the sheet, you'll also see the social media for the last three weeks. Again, video tends to do best, and so we were able to share some of the testimonials that we used at the breakfast with our families, and that really spoke highly of both the board and the work we do in our schools. And before I send it back for Super News, I just also wanted to highlight, I was shocked this evening when I was putting this together, that the next time we see you is the middle of December, and many of our Christmas events will be well underway, but these are some of the dates just for you guys to note. And the first one I just wanted to highlight was the St. Bernard Community Band informational meeting. This is something that Charles Cassar is really spearheading with a whole team behind him. This is an opportunity for musicians throughout the parish to get together and be able to play music and reconnect, and so that's very exciting. More information about that can be found on Facebook, and then you'll see every-
Let me just reject a moment. You know, Charles Cassar is working on this endeavor, but I want to do a shout out to Kathy Gonzalez, who for years, you know, was a teacher, principal, supervisor of transportation here with us, and who played in our community band prior to the storm and was instrumental contacting me, please, can we resurrect it, can we resurrect it? So she, together with Charles Cassar, are making that happen. But I wanted to really credit Kathy Gonzalez for initiating this endeavor and then get it back up and running. And, you know, it's anyone within the community who is interested in playing in such a group and will, you know, provide the facility and the major instruments and such. And so it's a really good venue for our more mature members of the community who still would like a venue in which to play music and maybe just don't have the opportunities, okay?
And then you'll see some of the other Christmas events right behind that. Everything from Elementary Neighborhood Christmas Caroling again, which is scheduled for December 4th, where we'll have all of our elementary schools visiting our students in their own neighborhoods. It was a huge success. This is really our second year doing it. Last year, all of our schools participated, and three years ago, Miro Elementary did. And then you'll see the Christmas Gala from Chumet High School, Hand on Messiah, and then Historic Caroling in the French Quarter. This is also something we have done in the past and has been a big hit. And finally, Doc Vale's Children's Christmas is scheduled for December 14th. Without further ado, I'm going to send it back to Barry and Jack for Super News.
And now from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News.
Hi, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lamoyne, and welcome to this edition of Super News, where we ring in our show with a look at Chumet High School's Ring Day.
Over 400 seniors took part in the longstanding Chumet High School tradition. A celebration of the class of 2020, Ring Day celebrates the contributions, achievements, and leadership of the graduating class. After a morning parade filled with decorations and school spirit, family, friends, and school board members joined our seniors for the ceremony, solidifying their bond with each other and their alma mater. Assistant Superintendent Mary Lametta served as the guest speaker for this very special occasion.
There are over 400 soon-to-be graduates sitting here before us, and each of you are connected to one another and this school in unique and powerful ways. Like a quilt, each of you contribute something that is different, but together you make a whole. And like a quilt, we are all united. We are tied together by that big C that we wear over our hearts with pride.
Ms. Lametta was also honored recently by the St. Bernard Business and Professional Women's Organization as a model working woman at the club's recent anniversary party. The event was part of a national celebration for National Business Women's Week, acknowledging the important role women have in the workplace and the community.
Lametta, who has served the students of St. Bernard for over 30 years, said she was humbled and grateful by the recognition and is thankful for the school system family that made it possible. Congratulations, Mary, on this well-deserved honor.
Another woman who has been a model for consistency and commitment is Chumet High School volleyball coach Kelly Plesher, who recently made history in earning her 700th career win. Plesher said this latest milestone is a testament to the young women who have made the program such a strong one. With 13 district championships during her tenure, Plesher is respected throughout the state as one of the best teachers in the game, but there is something even more special about her career. All of her wins and successes have been at Chumet High School.
And now, let's head over to Lacoste Elementary and see what's happening in Bulldog Country.
Hi, I'm Connor Dewey.
And I'm Olivia Nevels, and welcome to Lacoste School Spotlight.
We'll start things off with some big news about some of our smallest students as we introduce our Biddy Bulldogs. Lacoste's new dance team.
Made up of first and second graders, our Biddy Bulldogs truly show teamwork and school spirit. The group has already performed at school and community events across the parish and are gearing up for a special Christmas performance at the government complex.
Hey, Olivia, you know why Bulldogs are such bad dancers?
Mm-hmm.
Because they have two left feet.
Wow, that must be rough.
In other news, each year on Halloween, our students participate in field day, while our PTC also hosts a fall fair. Our theme was positively connected, and all of our activities and games were tied to that theme.
Our school also stays connected through our Monday morning assembly, where golden paws are given to classes, which is a great hallway behavior. Awards are also presented to students who complete Lexia and Zern and who are celebrating Bulldog birthdays. At the assembly, fifth grade and kindergarten buddies sit together so they can show little ones how to be a responsible and a respectful Bulldog.
In addition to honoring terrific kids, each month, we also honor our Students of the Month. These Bulldogs receive a cane certificate for a free meal. We are thankful to Kiwanis, Chumet Refining, and Cadence for being our community partners.
We would also like to take this time to congratulate our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kaitlin Lottz. She truly is an inspiration, and we are lucky to have her with us as part of the Lacoste family.
And speaking of our extended family, it's time to meet two of our school board members as we present across the board.
Hi, my name is Catherine Lamoyne. I am the school board member for District One in St. Bernard Parish, and I've been serving on the board for five years.
My name is Bill Egan. I am the school board member for District Two. I've been a school board member for over 20 years now, and to me, it's the most important job I have ever held in my life.
My background is in education. I taught in the school system. Now I work in higher education, and I felt like that would be a unique skill set that I could bring to the board. I was always inspired, when I was a teacher, by the school board member at my school, Mr. Herman Barnett, who would always come and visit the classrooms. He was always taking part in terrific kids and things of that nature, and so he was a true inspiration for me.
I received the call from one of the school board members, who I'm friendly with her husband and her, and told me about it. And within two days, I met with the school board in order to, you know, tell them who I was and what's going on, and I was appointed to take the spot that the previous school board president had the spot, and that's how I got into it. And I had two children that were in school here.
In addition to serving on the St. Bernard Parish School Board, I also represent our parish on the Louisiana State School Boards Association. I represent District One there, which is a 13 parish region, and I'm very thankful to Dr. Hugh Kraft for getting me involved in this wonderful organization.
We got the best. We got everything these kids could want, really, and it's top-notch. It's top-notch. And if I had just that much to do with it, that's all I need to know that what we're doing for the kids are here in St. Bernard.
I'm so proud of the accomplishments of our teachers and our students. We have the most dedicated set of teachers across our parish, and we're very proud of the hard work that they do.
Thanks to the school board for all you do, and thank you for joining us here at Lacoste. And back to you guys. Bye.
Thanks, Connor and Olivia. In other news, the Chumet Cultural Arts Center continues to be a hub for learning and performance. Here, we see some of the training that was part of a master's class with Chumet High School graduate Kristen Bauer, who trained vocalist as part of their applied music recital.
The Louisiana Philharmonic was also on campus recently, performing music onstage and sharing knowledge with students from across the district in small groups. It's just another great way to instill an appreciation for the arts.
And speaking of arts, our Penn intern Lauren Mopin from the Chumet High School class of 2016 is showcasing her fellow alum as part of her final project. From dance to theater to music and TV, each program of the Cultural Arts Center is led by a former owl.
Always remembering that we are in pursuit of great music and great theater and great dancing, but most importantly, we are in pursuit of being great people.
To see this video in its entirety, visit our YouTube channel at the Parish Educational Network.
And now let's head over to the Pirates Cove to see Trist Middle School's Super News report.
Hi, I'm Cameron White.
And I'm Madeline Lopez. And we start our segment with our cheerleaders, who have become a driving force at our school. In addition to promoting school spirit and cheering on the school teams, now, under the direction of cheer sponsors Sharon Chapman and Lauren Blackwell, the squad is focused on giving back to the community. Our cheerleaders volunteered at the St. Bernard Parish Animal Shelter and at a blood drive and bake sale for Jonathan Serrano and his family. The team also raised money for the community's Halloween Trick or Chunk event and are working to send the students in need to four-H summer camp. The cheerleaders also show appreciation and support to teachers, policemen, and firefighters, with meals and by volunteering at the retirement home. We are proud of all they do to give back.
We are also proud of our PBS program, which encourages and rewards positive behaviors and actions of students. Teachers award deserving students with a Pirate's Gold coupon, which can be used to purchase snacks and trinkets from our Trist treasure chest. Each week, a winning student can visit at the VIP table, very important pirate, located in the school cafeteria. The lucky winner can invite four of his or her friends to dine with them.
Hey, Madeline, you know what a Pirate's favorite fast food is?
What?
R Vs. In other news, PBIS recently paired up with our Student Council and Beta Club to host a neon glow party. Over 200 students wearing neon-colored glow sticks accessories took part in the fun.
Our sixth grade students also had fun while showing off their creative side in their science and social study classes. In science, students created games demonstrating their knowledge of the planets, while social studies students built pyramids and created mummies and sarcophaguses. This hands-on learning was all a part of the unit on ancient Egypt. The end products were something to see and a great way to bring learning to life, or in the case of a mummy's, to the afterlife.
Thanks for joining us here at Trist. We'll see you next time for more Super News. Bye.
Thank you so much, Trist. And now we'll go from Pirates to Knights and Lions.
Pirates and Knights and Lions. Oh, my! The Knights of Columbus Archbishop Rumel Council recently presented a $5,000 check to the St. Bernard Parish School Board with proceeds from the Louisiana Crawfish Festival. The donation will fund projects within the Special Education Department and continues a longstanding relationship between the Knights of Columbus and the school board.
And that partnership is just so precious to us, and y'all have been one of the constants in the parish, you know. We, and again, I had said this last week when we had another group up here, and our theme this year with connection. We cannot do any of this by ourselves, and it's our connectedness to the community and the community groups that make it such a positive experience for our children.
The St. Bernard Parish School Board Lions Club also made a generous contribution recently, giving $1,500 to the League of Angels, a community organization that provides recreational opportunities for children with disabilities in St. Bernard Parish.
The Lions Club, which was established over a decade ago, supports an array of programs within the parish as a way for the school system to give back to the community. Thanks to these connections, we are able to provide a first-class school system.
And speaking of first class, we'd like to give a special shout-out to one of our parish's biggest benefactors, Ms. Rita Gue, the president of the Miro Foundation, who was recently recognized by the International Economic Development Council for improving the economy and the quality of life in St. Bernard Parish. Making St. Bernard a great place to live, work, and visit is more than just a slogan, but rather the vision of Rita's aunt, Arlene Miro. Rita and her fellow board members are fulfilling that mission each day. Congratulations, Rita, for this well-deserved recognition.
Well, that's about all the time we have, but before we go, we wanted to show some of the fun and hands-on learning that was part of the Islanios Museum Days. It was a great way of showing our students the importance of the Canary Islanders and their connection and influence on the history and culture of our parish.
Thanks for tuning in, and we look forward to the next Super News, where we'll meet all the super teachers that were named as this year's Teachers of the Year. And remember, stay involved, stay informed, and stay connected. And we'll see you next time on Super News, where we always let the Super News roll. We'll see you next time. Bye-bye.
That's another great job, Ms. Lamoyne. Any board members have anything for Ms. Snyder? Okay, again, thank you. Okay, move on to item number five. It's education. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mr. England. Item number five is a report on statewide assessment results. Item number eleven. Some good news to share with us?
Yes, good evening. You can see in your handout, I just seen your handout for you, I have our parish-wide test score, excuse me, district performance score, which contains some test scores. And you can see we had some growth from last year to this year. We maintained our B status, and I also listed the surrounding districts for you. In addition, below, you can see the schools all maintain their grades and kept their status. And I would like to point out, at the very bottom, CF Raleigh Alternative School is now a C school, and that is, they are now being judged with a new accountability system that more fits the mission of alternative schools. And it is more of a focus on student growth as opposed to the exact test score. It's more a focus on them earning credits to keep them on track while they're at the alternative school, and core credits, not just any credit, but core credits that work toward the diploma. They also are now judged on the dropout credit accumulation index the following year, meaning how well they perform when they go back to the district school and how many credits they earn the next year, to make sure they were held to a standard while they were at the alternative school. And then finally, instead of measuring them on a four-year cohort graduation rate, they measure them on students who came in in 12th grade and how they finished and the quality of a diploma or a credential of which they finished at the end. So it really more judges them on the work they do with the students while they're at the alternative school and making sure they're growing, they're staying on track, and they're earning credits toward graduation and being prepared to perform when they leave this, you know, going back to the district school, to which point you see improvement there. We have Raleigh do a C school now, as opposed to being judged in the other method. So that was great news. And of course, all these scores, I like to always say, what you don't see here in this paper is a tremendous amount of work and dedication on behalf of the students, parents, the teachers, the administrators, the support staff, central office staff, everyone works so hard to help students continue to achieve, continue to grow, and helps our district grow and continue to meet the high standards we have here in Louisiana. So it's a big team effort, and we love to see the growth that we continue to have.
Okay. Any other board members have any comments on that? Mrs. Dyssard?
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. It's just great to see that our parish scores, even though the standards have changed, we continue to rise from last year. So it's great, and some of the schools improved, but overall, St. Bernard Parish improved, so it's wonderful. And as you said, you know, it's from the hard work of our administration and our teachers and our support personnel and of our students. And, you know, testing is not taken lightly by anyone in our district and definitely not statewide. I know the students work very, very hard, you know, to perform well on these tests, and the teachers work very hard to prepare our students for testing. And it's become, unfortunately, a, you know, a very large component of our educational system. But the fact that we continue to grow is great news, and it shows that our teachers are unbelievably wonderful and efficient in preparing our students to take these tests. And so congratulations to our teaching staff and our students and the parents for making sure that their children get their homework done and get the right rest before all of the testing takes place.
I like to always point out, the third and fourth grade tests are the only ones that are still on paper. At fifth through high school, the tests are all online. And again, that's dedication from the teachers to learn the technology and then use that in the instruction and the students to step up and learn how to cope with and take the tests and show that they've mastered the standards using the computer, not just on paper. So that's another level. I feel like a proficiency they have to earn. The teachers have to help them with it through the year. So that's another layer of work that everyone's jumped on board.
Talk a little bit about what we see, the differential with fourth and fifth grade, especially with the essay writing on the computer, and what the experience has been and how we're looking to address maybe what we see as that drop in fourth and fifth.
Yes, and y'all have been in the schools, as you walk through the halls of the schools, you can see third- you can see third grade essays in the halls displayed on the bulletin board, two full pages, wonderful, beautiful written essays down as low as third grade, fourth grade. The writing and what the teachers have done to help the students with evidence-based, good quality writing is really unmatched from what we see in our district the last few years. When they get into fifth grade, they have to be able to type that essay on a computer. It's very different from just writing an essay. And the length of time the state gives you to do it, you do not have time to write a rough draft and then type it in. So the students have to read, they have to figure out the answer, find their evidence, flip back to the source, cite the evidence, all while constructing the essay and typing it. No time to write a rough draft and then type it in. And there was an MIT study that says if you don't know where the keys are, you're using 90% of your brain to figure out where the keys are. So we're putting in bigger emphasis on helping the students learn the typing, learn where the keys are, so they can use their brain power to show what they know, cite the correct evidence, and get the well-constructed essays that we're seeing in third and fourth grade on paper. We know they can do it on paper, so it is a big shift to be able to produce it on the computer. So we did buy a product called Typing Agent, which is an online typing software that has game-based built-in with the instructions, so the students can help with the finger location and do it in a quick way, like a video game, as well as a lesson, sort of mirror what they're doing, what they like to do, and help their brain learn where the keys are, but on the correct keys. You know, it's very difficult for them to continue to produce good essays in that amount of time, do the reading, cite the evidence, if they don't really know where the keys are. So you may find the parents more increased emphasis on typing, and that's why. So they can show what they know on the computer.
Abby's in fifth grade, and she's practicing Typing Agent over the weekend.
Wonderful.
Because she's already panicking about leaps.
Right, well, because you could, if you have a write of paper-based essay, it'll be at least two pages and beautiful, but the amount of time to type, you know, the time factor really plays a big part.
Something as simple as the word count, when we did an analysis, you're seeing, forget about content and what is actually in it, but what they were able to produce at the fifth grade level was so much less in length, say, than at the third and fourth grade level because, as Ms. Lometa was saying, you're reading it, maybe two different texts, you're trying to figure out how you're going to write this particular essay, taking evidence from the text, comparing it or putting it down in such a way that you're constructing it. And then, as a 10-year-old, you're up there trying to type it in, all within a timed period. So you can't take as long as you need to take, you've got to do it on that timeline. And when that time's up, that's it. You can't get extended time. So even something as simple as that, people don't think about, even if you had to do it. I would hate doing it, to tell you the truth, because I'm one of these people, I like to hold it and read it, but we can't do that anymore with all the online testing. So we're making a major effort in, even with the Chromebooks, Chromebooks in all the classes, getting them now more used to even in third and fourth grade, constructing, you know, paragraphs or something now, or sentences depending on their age, using the actual Chromebooks and typing it in. And which, and what we've got to do is try to get it to, I know it's not like the old typing we used to take where you, you know, you learn the keyboard, you see the five-year-olds take this, and they're so quick on their thumbs, but if you're actually using a computer keyboard, it's kind of hard to just do it like that and hunt and peck around it, because that keyboard is so, is different than what it looks like, you know, here. So just think of those logistics when you're thinking of a 10 or 11-year-old, fifth grader for the first time, trying to show what they know in that fashion.
Well, just to tie it back to the resources that y'all have provided with the Chromebooks in the classroom, so students do have the opportunity to write on a regular basis, and then the 10 gig internet bandwidth that we do now have, that we can have all of our students from elementary through high school on Chromebooks every day in the classroom. So in addition to thinking of the infrastructure of getting typing, you had to put the infrastructure in so we could make this type of instruction possible. So it's been a journey, but the result of it is the students now have the opportunity to participate in activities like they're going to have on the state test and show they've mastered the standards in class as well as on the test. So it all circles back to the resources that they have to do this in class every day.
Are you finished, Mrs. Dyso?
Just a couple more things. By the way, congratulations on your award from the BPW. We're very happy and proud for you.
Thank you. It's really due, we have such a great team, and I'm so fortunate to work with people who are so dedicated and so selfless, and that's what helps, you know, the whole, make it all work, for sure. So I'm appreciative of the team that I have.
We appreciate your job well done, too. And again, congratulations. But I had a question about the fourth grade. You said that they're the only ones that don't take
Third and fourth.
I mean, third and fourth on the computer. Will that change next year? Is that, is the state, they're not going to require that next year, are they?
You never know what they're going to require from year to year. Right now...
Because I can't predict the state if I could, but right now, they're giving us a choice each year, year by year, they let us choose. And so each year, they've let us choose.
Only for third and fourth, you get a choice.
For third and fourth only.
Fifth and on up, it's mandated.
And I've asked the state, most districts, almost every district in the state does paper-based in third and fourth. Just about everyone is still going paper-based, third and fourth.
Good, I was curious of that fact. Okay, thank you very much. And also, we'll take this data, of course, and use it for next year's testing to analyze and improve even more. So great job on the improvement, and we look forward to continued improvement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. England?
Thank you, Mr. Warner. And I would just want to piggyback with Ms. Dyso, but my, I mean, it's with Raleigh, I'm really, you know, sometimes with the public, they got a negative attitude towards Raleigh. But this is showing that the administration, the teachers, and the students are really working hard over there, and they're up to a C grade on accountability. It's a fantastic leap, you know, for our school system. And so this goes to show you that every student, we're looking out for every student.
Yes. And that they're preparing them to succeed when they leave Raleigh. So it shows what they're doing there, it's helping them succeed when they finish at Raleigh.
Right. But we thank the staff over there at the Raleigh.
Yes, very dedicated.
Right.
Any other board members? My comment is, congratulations to Sherman High School. Another A, another year where we're a A school. I think we ought to give them a big round. That's a great job for them to keep, to keep that with as many students as they have. The students that they get in, a lot of times, you know, they work real hard with them to get that grade to that. So that's my comment. Other, other comment is, you know, we did go up, we went from 81.1 to 83, so we're heading in the, the trajectory's going in the right direction.
Yes.
That's all I have. We'll move on back to Mr. England.
All right, thank you, Mr. Warner. As personnel changes, Ms. Boche?
As you can see, we've got, you know, just a few changes, and it's always good when the list is short. It shows stability. We have a few people on leaves. And, Ms. Dyso, we've got a couple of retirees, if you want them.
Thank you. It's always sad when we see retirees, but they are very well-deserving of their retirement time. And Ms. Rosalyn Hanson, who's a school nurse, she's been with us many, many years, and I know she's done an excellent job. And we want to wish her a happy retirement, and thank you very much, Ms. Hanson, for the many years of service to our district. And then we also have Juliette Anderson and Nolan Terabone, and we appreciate their service to St. Bernard Parish schoolchildren, and we want to wish them a very happy retirement also. So dedicated, many dedicated employees. Like I said, it's sad, but then happy for them.
Right.
Sad to lose them, but they deserve a happy retirement.
They sure do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dyso. Okay, any other board members? If not, we'll move on to item number seven, policy update. Ms. Executive, Ms. Dyso?
Thank you, Mr. England. First item is policy J C, J G C B immunizations.
So you guys have, in your binder, I'm going to walk you through this. Under tab one, it's going to be just an overview of the changes that are proposed for each of the policies. Within each of the other tabs, what you will find on the first policy you'll see is the policy that is being proposed, that's the clean copy. Behind that, you'll see the copy with the revisions, and if there's any other supplemental information that will be included. So the first, J G C B immunizations, this is in reference to Act 196. Essentially, what this policy did was remove the language regarding specific immunizations and instead replaced it with a reference to the Office of Public Health and the Department of Health and Hospitals, which will eliminate the need to revise this annually as they revise their immunization schedules. That's the first policy. Second, I D D F B, service animals in schools. This is just a policy recode. There are two additional policies that we'll be bringing before the board regarding some special education. That's going to change the order, so this is being revised to being I D D F A to I D D F B. Under tab three, J S, student fees, fines, and charges. This is probably the most substantial of the policy changes being proposed this evening. This is in reference to Act 240, which became effective on August 1st. And essentially, this new legislature requires that school boards adopt and post a policy which addresses the assessment, collection, and use of fees charged to students or their parents or legal guardians no later than December 1st. So this will be posted on our school and district website, and so you can find that under tab three. Included in that is the proposed fee schedule.
Let me interject a moment. We're going to, why don't we take these one at a time?
Sure.
And go through and see if there are any questions, and then we'll vote on each one separately, okay?
Okay.
So let's take a look at that first one and just reiterate the change in the policy that you see under tab two and see if we have any.
So what you have under tab two for Act is in reference to Act 196, and it removes the language regarding specific immunizations. In particular, it removed the meningi, I'm going to not say that correctly, meningitis disease specifications, and instead just referenced the schedule. So if you look behind two, what you will find is the schedule that the CDC posts, and this is really what hospital use, what doctors use, and this is what the policy is referencing. This way, as adjustments are being made to the schedule, we don't need to do a full policy change, it's just referencing that schedule.
If you would just give us a moment to read through. Does anybody have any questions at this time? Okay, we're just going to take a moment to review.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we, that we, the first one, on immunization.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Warner to accept the changes in policy J G C B, seconded by Mr. Smith. Okay, are there any questions about this change? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Okay, the next one, service animals in schools, I D D F B.
So I D D F B, this is simply a reclassification of the coding at the very top. The actual policy itself will remain the same. It was before coded as I D D F A, it is now being proposed to be I D D S B.
We'll make a motion, make a motion to reject it, accept the policy update for the service animals in schools.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Warner. Are there any questions?
Just, we just changing the...
Just the title number, correct.
Yeah, these coding numbers, if you go to any school system in the state and you look at their policy manuals, you're going to find that the 69 school systems, almost all subscribe to the same coding sequence, and most of the templates on these policies are done with, in consultation with forethought that y'all have already, you know, approved that contract. That helps as a result of the legislative sessions, if there's a need to change any policies, that they will produce the sample policies for you, and you can adjust or modify if you so choose, as long as it complies with the actual law and legislation. So if you go around to different school systems, you're going to primarily see the same basic policies in operation.
So Ms. Boche, this change was, it's not like there was something that was placed in front of this particular policy, correct? It's just so that it's consistent with the...
There is one coming up.
There is one coming up that will bring in December.
That had, that necessitated this to be re-coded.
Okay, all righty, thank you. Any other questions on this policy? Okay, there's a motion on the floor in a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is student fees, fines, charges, and it's filed J S.
Yes, so under divider four, you'll see the changes for this policy. As I mentioned, this is really going to be the most significant of the changes. So this is in reference to Act 240 or 240, which became effective on August 1st, and requires that school boards adopt and post a policy on their website which addresses the assessment, collection, and use of fees charged to students or their parents or legal guardians no later than December 1st. And so what you'll see under tab four is the current policy, what's being changed. You'll also see our proposed schedule of fees for the elementary school, the middle school, and then the high school.
And just, just as a little bit of a background of this, we always had, obviously, a student fee policy, which you see. But in this last legislative session, there was, as Ms. Schneider has alluded to, a piece of legislation, is it any? No. Piece of legislation that was passed, which mandated the revision of this particular policy with an emphasis on the availability for waivers, which we've included in here due to certain conditions. This policy mimics state law the most verbatim. Once you adopt this policy, then we've got to obviously post it as we do the entire policy manual, but have it on the website and available in student handbooks and such. It mandates consistency across our levels for student fees. So for example, one elementary school can't do something different from another elementary school if we're going to charge something consistently across our middle schools or the high school. So we can't have that particular variance. We are probably the, looking at policies from other school systems and fee schedules, probably charge or assess fees the least amount that I've seen of any system anywhere. You should see what fees are assessed in different school systems. So we keep this to a bare minimum. If you look at the elementary fee schedule that follows this policy, it addresses the student instructional fee, which y'all have approved, the $15 per year, and then the supply lists that the teachers give out at the elementary level, we're looking at that and putting pretty much a cap. they have to use, you know, in the pool, we, they can either have their own, or we provide it for a dollar, the swim cap that goes with them. And then, in any type of field trip that is taken, if it is a mandated educational field trip, whatever the cost of the trip would be, that's the only thing that we do at the elementary level. If you look at the middle school, again, your instructional fee and your locker fee, the agenda books and the IDs that are given to the students, if by some chance they're lost, there's a replacement cost for it, their PE uniforms, and the band, if they're going to be in the band, which includes, this is not their band class, this, or this is, this is if they're going to be in the band class itself. And then, of course, the mandated educational field trip. At the high school level, I've never seen any high school with as few fees as we have. It's the replacement fee for IDs and agenda books, they're given the first one. If they lose it, there's that replacement fee, the PE uniform, the instructional fee, the $100 to be in the band, which covers the uniform, cleaning, and sheet music and all of that, and then any educationally mandated field trip that they're on. Otherwise, the school system supplies everything else for students, no lab fees, no technology fees. When you look across other districts, you see all of that assessed. These, then, once this policy is adopted, schools during the course of that year cannot assess an additional fee, other than what's listed here. Now, this does not include extracurricular activities. Those are choices for students and parents. So, if you choose an after-school extracurricular activity, this policy does not cover that. You would pay whatever cost for extracurricular that it would incur. These costs are only associated with classes taken during the school day. There is a provision in the policy for an economic hardship waiver, that there are forms to fill out and assessments to be done here to either grant the waiver or not. So, this is a policy which was outlined in state law that we have to adopt, and that the schools each year, we would adjust what the fee schedule would be, but it's posted, it will be posted online and incorporated into the student, for next year, the student handbooks and such, and information that's sent out.
What about the lunch program? What's for lunch? Do you don't?
Well, this doesn't, this wouldn't address lunch, because it's not a fee, but as we know, all of our elementary and middle schools in that federal program is, is free lunch.
Right.
At the high school, it does not qualify, and it, if you have the economic hardship, you can apply and fill out the forms for free and reduce lunch, otherwise, it would be a full-paying lunch. So, this policy does not cover lunch.
Cover that, okay.
Right, it specifically does not.
Just a clarification, that's all.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure everybody totally understands. So, this is in-school activities, nothing to do with extracurriculars. If a child or parent chooses the extracurricular, that's a different story, okay?
Okay, are there any questions?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we move the student fee, fines, and charges, but I have, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Esaveta. Mr. Warner?
The, the middle schools, they were involved in determining these fees, as well as the high schools?
Yes.
Because they, they determined their own fees, right? So, like, the high school, you're charging $2 for an ID card, whereas the middle school, it's $5 for an ID card.
Right, right.
It's kind of like back ways. You know, the high school guys ought to pay more than the middle school.
Well, the guys, the administration at the high school is, as we know, how do I put this? You know, they are very in tune with the students and try to minimize that, and they do a lot more school, I don't want to say fundraising, but they do. You know, that administration and group over there are very in tune to that.
So, they set their own fees at the middle school.
Yes, so we got the middle school people together to see what they could do to be able to operate.
In the high school.
When you look at these agenda books, and you want to know how much they really cost, if you've ever actually seen them, it's a tremendous expense when you multiply, you look at agenda books for, well, say, 600 kids at a middle school. Those agenda books can run us at least $10 or so apiece. So, you might be looking at $6,000 that the school is fronting initially to put an agenda book in every child's hands. Then, you're making an ID card, that's, you have to buy the cards and have the machine and go through, and so, everything is given at first with no charge, and we ask the students to please take care of them. So, the only cost is if they lose them, just like if they would lose a textbook, they have to replace it. So, if they lose an agenda book or an ID, they have to replace it.
Right. So, if they change their fee, so we have to come back in and change this policy? If they have to decide to go up on?
No, the fee is, the fee schedule's going to be the appendix to the policy. If we change anything significantly, we're going to make sure that y'all are aware of that. But this is going to be set for next school year, and that, once we do this, there are, there will be no changes for next school year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions?
I have one question.
Okay.
The criteria for the waiver, is that a state-wide thing? Each district come up with its own?
Each district can modify, as long, as long as, you know, you're looking at the economic hardship waiver, the economic components are set. You can't, you can't modify that really in any way. You can add criteria, but if you have a family or a student, if you have a family under these particular programs, then they would qualify for the waiver from an economic standpoint.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding this policy? Okay, there are no more questions. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, Ms. Votch. Next item is policy EBBC, emergency crisis management. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's school and student safety. Apologize, skip to the following one.
EBBC.
EBBC.
Yes, ma'am. So, in 2018, the Louisiana Legislature created policies which included procedures for reporting threats of violence and terrorism. The 2019 Louisiana Legislature, which became effective on August 1st, revised that legislation to include new definitions and altered the provisions regarding examination of students who had made a threat. You'll see two new definitions in this new policy, as well as revised the reporting requirements, including reporting any threat that is credible and imminent. So, those are really the two major changes for EBBC, is going to be the definition changes, as well as the policy and procedures for the threat assessment. This policy will also allow us to condense JCDAG, which was threats of terrorism or violence, and we'll talk about that at the very end into this policy, so we consolidated those two policies. But those are the major changes in reference to policy EBBC.
And this one is very prescribed in state law because of what's been happening across the country as well. So, if we find a threat to be creditable and report it to the Sheriff's Department, they make the determination on a psychological evaluation of students before reentry. So, that's been a little bit of a shift in what the law is mandating, and makes the determination whether they are going to, you know, when they, if it's creditable, report it to the district attorney's office, who then may or may not take action at that particular point. So, these particular pieces of the policy, if you look at the accompanying state law, you're going to see the same verbiage. So, this is coming straight from the revised statute.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with the update.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Smith, and seconded by Mr. England. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, this one just mirrors the state law, correct?
Correct, definitely.
No further discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Votch. Now, we will go to policy EBBC, emergency crisis management.
So, previous law had already required crisis management and response plans to be reviewed and revised, reviewed annually and revised when necessary. The change to this policy is in regards to principals of high schools conducting the annual review now need to seek input from the president of the senior class or student council, and at least one other responsible student selected by the principal, and that is directly out of the law as well, Act 44.
So, you can see the little sentence in blue that we have to add into the existing policy, that some representative thought would be a good addition to the crisis team.
Okay. That's great that they're including the student in this emergency crisis management team. Very good. Okay, is there a motion on the floor at this time? There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine, seconded by Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions? Okay, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, Ms. Votch. Next item is policy update on JCDAG, threats of terrorism or violence.
So, given the policy update that happened above with EBBC, the policy is being recommended for deletion, as the verbiage that was in this policy is now being included in the previous policy that I discussed. So, the recommendation here is just for the deletion of this policy.
It's just the elimination of the original policy, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor at this time?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or discussion on this motion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I'd like to thank Ms. Schneider, she's done a lot of work in putting all of this together, now that she's trying to keep up with our policy manual and making sure that the policies that we have to update, so she's in constant communication with our, the firm that works with us on this, and make sure that we're keeping current and keeping us up to date. So, want to thank her for her work in this particular area, which is needed.
Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider.
Say good off.
We all got our agenda books tonight on that policy meeting.
Yes.
Very good.
So nice.
Thank you again, Ms. Schneider. It's very well done. Okay, next item on the agenda is the revised 2019-2020 general fund and special revenue funds budgets. Good evening, Mr. Fernandez.
Good evening. In your package, you have the first budget revision of the year, 2019-2020. As you recall, we adopted the original budget in May of 2019, which was before year-end. So, usually, every year, we come back in the fall around this time and do a technical revision, where we basically just reappropriate any outstanding encumbrances at the end of the year, and any fund balances at the end of the year, and just tighten up some of the numbers. So, basically, that's one of the things this revision does, and you have five exhibits. Number one is a summary of the general fund, beginning expenditures and revenues, and estimated ending fund balance. Number two is a detail of the revenue changes. Number three is a detail of the expenditure changes. Number four is a summary of proposed changes to the lunch fund budget. And number five is just the other special revenue, major special revenue budgets. And basically, in terms of the general fund, what you're going to see is, in addition to the aforementioned adding of encumbrances and fund balance, we have also made adjustments for the pay raises that the Board and the state have given to all employees. So, to reflect that, you'll see that in the expenditure budgets, as increases in just about all the employee salaries. We've also, when salaries went and adjusted for actuals, because back in May, we, as you know, we had a lot of vacancies, so we filled many of those vacancies, so we're going with the actual personnel rather than estimating salaries for those. In terms of revenues, the major changes, all, we got the new assessed values for the new assessment of 2019 tax year, so revenues reflect that, an increase in Avalorum tax revenues because our assessed, taxable assessed value of property went up. We also made some adjustments for some substantial contributions that we received from the Knights Columbus, Valero, and the Autism Awareness Group. We have an adjustment for the MFP to reflect the new MFP amount, which adds in the $1,000, $500 amounts for the certified and support pay raises, as well as the adjustment in the per pupil factor. And other than that, that's pretty much all the changes that we have made to the expenditure budget. In the lunch fund budget, again, we also, the changes of major salaries and benefits to reflect the increase from the pay increases for the lunch fund employees. And the special revenue funds budget just reflects the actual allocations we have for this year. We still are waiting for some of the early childhood final allocations to come through, the LA4 allocations, but these are the new allocations for these grants, and the Avalorum Maintenance Fund, of course, is funded by a 5.5 mil Avalorum tax, that is adjusted as well for the new expected amount for those taxes. So, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we'll entertain questions at this time.
Mr. Fernandez, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the, the bus use, it's increased significantly?
On the facilities?
On, on the, yes.
On the revenues?
Mm-hmm, on the revenues.
That's, that's not really bus use, that's rental of facilities. We've had some of our facilities that have been used, and we receive rental for some productions that are being filmed. They're using some of our facilities as, as venues for their filming, so we have a substantial increase in some of those areas, so I've reflected some of that for the expected rental that we're going to be getting from those productions.
Remember that, that was, I think I had put that in, in the newsletter, that television show that's renting one of our facilities and using it consistently over a six-month period, and that's what the majority of this is.
Okay. Thank you, also, that was a significant increase, so it's always good.
We hope it's renewed, the TV show.
Yeah. Please watch.
that television show that's renting one of our facilities and using it consistently over a six-month period. And that's what the majority of this is.
Thank you. So that was a significant increase. It's always good.
We hope it's renewed, the TV show.
Please watch the show so it keeps getting renewed.
Keep the ratings up.
I think it's on Showtime. I don't, I don't have that.
Mr. Fernandez, it looks like adverum is ticking up.
Yes, sir. That, yeah, we had an increase in our, in our taxable assessed value of property.
About a two-million-dollar difference we're anticipating?
Yes, sir.
That's significant.
Yes, sir.
That says a lot about, I think it says a lot about our school district myself. I think we're attracting a lot of new families to come down here and buy some of the homes that are on the market and want to be a part of St. Bernard Parish.
Yes, sir. I agree with them.
I'm sorry?
I agree with them. They should come be a part of St. Bernard Parish.
Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion.
No, sir, we do not have a motion. Mr. Warner?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the revised budget as presented by Mr. Fernandez.
And, okay, there's a motion ticked out. That's general fund and special revenue funds budget by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Are there any other questions before we vote? Okay. There being none, and of course, you can ask questions about it at the regular meeting also. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Always a fine job. We appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Fochet.
Just as, actually with Ms. Schneider and Mr. Lemoine in super news, talked about all the upcoming activities. So I think, you know, with this crazy schedule this year with Thanksgiving being so late and so close to Christmas, I can't believe we only have one week of school before we go to the Thanksgiving holidays and then quickly followed by Christmas. So we have jam-packed activities at the schools. So I would suggest to parents, you really check the little, the school newsletters that are coming home or check the websites for their different activities because they will be very full in the month of December. At our next meeting next week, we will get the 2018-19 financial uncompliance audit, you know, at the regular meeting. And of course, talk about the special meeting in December for this, my evaluation. That'll be before the committee meeting in December. So that's really about all. And hopefully, we're going to meet once more before the Thanksgiving holidays, which will be very nice.
It's coming fast.
It's coming too fast. I haven't done any Christmas jobs.
Any questions for Ms. Fochet before we adjourn?
Can I?
Ms. Dyer, I'm sorry. Ladies first.
Thank you, Mr. England. I just want to give a shout-out to Lacoste Elementary School. I was fortunate enough to attend the talent show. And we really do have some talent at our elementary schools, well, in all our schools. But the students performed musically. They sang, they danced, they, they played the piano. They had comedy acts. I mean, it's just incredible how these students performed. And they had so much self-assurance. They were all doing this on their own, you know, on their own little acts. And I just, it was just very impressive for the elementary students to perform so well. And, and then tonight with the super news, I was just really impressed with our students presenting the information about their schools. We are just so blessed to have a wonderful parish and to have so many wonderful students in it. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to the performers at Lacoste Elementary and also the teachers who helped put that talent show on. Thank you.
Touche. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I'm going to match your shout-out with a shout-out to the football team.
Right.
They made the playoffs.
Right.
So they're going to play Hannon Friday night. I'm sorry, Hornville. Pardon me, Hornville. In Hornville, Friday night. So make sure they do good. And also, I know that little storm that passed through Olga at the end of last month, I think. Did we get any damage from that? Can we get a report maybe in the next meeting if they had any issues or anything with that storm that passed through?
I'm not aware of any lasting issues from the storm at all. If there are, I'll bring them to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Go Owls.
Yeah, that's right. Anyone else? If not, item number ten, adjournment. Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Essevedo. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned. Good night.